Hey Jennifer, can you hear us? Hey Jennifer. She may not be at her. Hi. Hey Jennifer, can you hear us?
I'm gonna sit now.
I put you over there. I always just swap you guys. I always put you on my side, you know this. Don't tell them, Linda, but you're my favorite. I'm good, how are you? Yeah. Yeah, you brought back the cold weather, what was up with that? I mean, it was colder down below than it was up here and I could not, I was like, take me to town so I can be warm. Yeah, yeah, every time I would come up here, it'd be at least 10 degrees warmer, every single time.
If you ask me, it was warmer in Antarctica than
Than it was here?
colder plunge.
Here.
Here.
Yeah. Yeah, I was, um, I'm a volunteer firefighter on the side and I was sitting in class, mm-hmm, for Evergreen. And I was sitting in class and we got a foot of snow in like an hour that week.
That came in like crazy.
Oh yeah, that was, I was like, can we go? I'm not gonna make it back home.
Yeah, that was crazy. It was like 17 inches over there.
Yeah, it was quick. It was just boom.
And wet.
Mm-hmm, yeah, yeah. Hey Jennifer, can you hear us? I don't know if she's at her.
Like that Verizon commercial, if you can hear me.
I think it is, because I think it's following, but I don't know, she's at her desk or not.
John calling in.
No, he is gonna be, he was in Denver, so he said he'd probably be here like right at 7:00 or 7:01. Hey Jennifer, can you hear us?
Britt, were you just talking to me?
Can you hear me?
I can now, yes.
Awesome, okay. I had to rig it with the owl again, so I just wanted to make sure.
Yes.
Thank you. Clear. We are just waiting to have quorum in the room, just to let everyone online know. I did, but yeah, yeah. We have five in the room, but we're just waiting for Timmy, so we have enough for this vote. So we'll keep you updated.
All right, thanks Britt.
Hey Jennifer, could we essentially start the meeting and start voting on minutes while we're waiting for him to come for the vote? Okay, thank you.
Do you, do you have confirmation, Britt, that he's on his way?
No. He said he was coming in email, uh, when I emailed you all, I think last week.
Got it, okay.
But if you want to start, um,
Okay, Britt, would you call the meeting to order?
Uh, meeting, uh, calling the meeting to order at 7:04. I should probably do that. Chair Reese. Let's see, Commissioner Glasser. Commissioner Penziner. Commissioner Dai.
Present.
Vice Chair Williams.
Present.
And we will note, Commissioner Cornell and Commissioner Mahold and Commissioner Duggan as absent currently. Oh, and Mayor Pro Tem Sterling, sorry. Thank you.
Move on to two of the minutes, anybody had any in the ad on the minutes? I had one thing, Chair Williams was gone last month, and so it was either called the meeting to order at 7:03 last month. We also had our little problem with the flooding here at the community center, so that ended up being a last minute virtual meeting. But does anybody else see anything with the minutes that is an issue? Okay, I would entertain your motion.
I made motion to approve. Oh, I'm sorry. I made the motion to approve the minutes of the last unoccasioned meeting.
Second.
Commissioner Dai.
Yes.
Chair Reese.
Yes.
Vice Chair Williams.
Um, stating.
Commissioner Glasser.
Yes.
Commissioner Penziner.
Yes.
And Mayor Pro Tem Sterling, because I don't have enough people. Were you here?
I was not. I was not there at the meeting.
I don't think I have enough people for this vote.
I don't believe we need, uh, six for the minutes. Is it five now?
I ha, oh. Steve wasn't here.
I guess we can't do anything until, uh, do you have a ready contact?
I'm gonna call him.
Hold on just a second, Jennifer?
Well, I think that if, you know, it, just because you weren't there, um, it's okay to approve the minutes if they look like they're consistent with the way that the minutes have been done and, you know, it sounds like Chair Reese reviewed them closely. So I don't have any concern with a, with a vote of yes on the minutes, even if you weren't present.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, they overall, they look consistent, like you said, with previous versions, so if you needed another yes, I'll go ahead and throw mine.
Perfect, and I will note that in the minutes for next month.
All right, thank you.
I will be right back.
I wonder, uh, Jennifer, if it's okay for me to start reviewing or reading a little bit about, uh, uh, leading into this before Timmy gets here? Do we need Timmy, uh, to be online before we're starting the process?
Do we know if he's gonna show up?
He's out, stepping out right now to call and ask.
Okay. Let's just, if we can hold to find out from Britt if he's coming. And do we know for certain that, um, Commissioner Cornell and Commissioner Mahold are not attending?
I was told that, I know for a fact that, uh, Commissioner Cornell is on the beach anyway, so I think that's highly unlikely he's calling in. And I just got told that, uh, Commissioner Mahold is on a cruise, which I was unaware of. That's correct, yeah. So I, I'm gonna say unlikely.
Goodness, I think the rest of us and the commissioners need to plan their beach vacation at some point.
Great. I, I plan my trips around planning commission. After such a long winter so far, I don't blame you.
Fair, fair.
Could we get some legal language to make a motion to hold the next planning commission on Maui? Save your opinion, brother.
If I can come, I'll, I'll give you that language.
Also fair, also fair.
All right, I'm gonna send him a text with the info, he can only be on for this vote.
He can only be on for the what?
He can only be on for this vote, he's at a, a conference, and I did not realize that.
Okay, well. Okay. Uh, do we have anybody in the room? Do we have members of the community in the room?
No, we do not.
Okay.
Well, we can certainly do the public comment, uh, at least get through that. If there's anybody who has public comment on a non-agenda item, if you're online, uh, there's nobody in the room, but you're online, please make yourself known and you'll have three minutes, give your name and address. Raise your hand or start speaking. Okay, gonna close public comment on, on agenda items.
He's lost, he's like, he's about to log on.
You can go ahead, Chair Reese, he's coming.
Okay, so we're gonna move on to the, uh, first agenda item of the night, which is going to be the comprehensive plan approval. the comprehensive plan approval. We are here tonight for a public hearing on adoption of the Town of Netherlands 2025 comprehensive plan. This public, the, the public was given notice of the public hearing by posting the agenda online and by publication of notice in the mount air. Before we begin with the public hearing, I would also like to provide an outline of the process for this meeting so that everyone knows what to expect. The hearing will start with the staff and SC group presenting the planning commission on the 2025 comprehensive plan. After the presentation, the planning commission will have an opportunity to ask clarifying questions of the staff after the presentation. We will then allow for public comment. You may ask the staff and the SC group to respond to any public comment. Planning commission will then discuss and deliberate on the adoption of the 2025 comprehensive plan. The public hearing is now open for the purpose of considering the 2025 comprehensive plan. Is Timmy on?
Not yet.
Not yet. And as soon as we receive our last commissioner, um, we will ask the staff and the group to present their report on the comp.
Um, it is possible. I'm assuming that SC group is, is not joining tonight. I haven't heard from them, so, but I think John and I are pretty well equipped to answer all your questions, especially after the work session we all did.
Yeah. Trainings, I used to train foster or adoptive parents. They said, you know, one of the techniques for getting engagement was to allow up to fifteen seconds of silence while you're in the room, and until you actually have to sit through fifteen seconds of silence, you don't know how hard that is, especially for somebody who talks as much as you.
Feels like fifteen hours, is that what you're saying?
Well, it works. Somebody will eventually break the uncomfortable silence and say, usually.
Definitely gives us the opportunity to look at just how far the draft has come. Seeing it in its final version is, is nice after last work session. Philip, we really thought how to get polished.
Yes.
All right, he said give him one minute. He's dialing in now. He's having a little bit of issues.
It's an amazing trip. We saw tons of wildlife, seals, penguins, whales. Scenery was just, you see pictures of Antarctica, but it's not the same until you have that three sixty experience. You had three sunny days, which I probably took credit for.
Nice.
Uh, well, two weeks, yeah, about two weeks. And, um, it, um, no, it was, uh, we did kayaking, we did Zodiac tours. We landed on an iceberg, which is unusual, but the crew went out and determined it was safe to land, and so we went off. There were some penguins on one side of the iceberg, and so we got to go over and harass them, and then um, we did, uh, my son did the polar plunge.
No way. In Antarctica?
I did not, but he did, and, but he, he's still alive. Water temperature was thirty-three, air temperature was thirty-five at the time.
Oh, it's summer.
Yeah, it's summer.
It was colder here in Netherland.
We got down to about a half a degree from the Antarctic Circle, so we didn't quite cross. That's all when we crossed it. But, uh, yeah, just, I would recommend anyone put this on your bucket list because it's just an amazing trip.
So when you landed on the iceberg, was that a helicopter? Was that?
No, no, there was, um, it, the iceberg sort of gradually dropped off into the ocean, so they ran the Zodiac right up on the edge of the iceberg and climb out and climbed up on top. Uh, it wasn't much of a climb. It was relatively low and flat ice. Unlike an iceberg that we saw in the Wild Sea that was five miles by eight miles, it had just broken off the Larsen Ice Shelf. Things like an island, just like an island. I did not realize it at the time, but icebergs that are of a certain size get named, much like hurricanes or.
So that they can track?
So they track it, tracked it by satellite. Uh, so this was iceberg A eight zero A. The A is the region, A O is something to do with the size of it.
Oh, it's off.
And I mean, A is whether or not it's a first time cab or second or third A B C. Because that's a great sound.
All right, Timmy's on, sorry.
No worries.
Thanks, Timmy, for that.
Yeah, sorry, everybody. I'm at a real estate conference, uh, this week. But, uh, uh, yeah, my full and undivided attention right now.
Thank you. Are you ready for me?
Thank you for joining, Timmy. Uh, we're gonna, we introduce the comp plan, and, uh, Britt is going to introduce the aim now.
All right, so tons of information on there. I won't, I won't go through all of it with you, but, um, just some keynotes, uh, last work session, um, we had some DDA members and Board of Trustees members and some of you as well. Um, we went through the log changes that SC group had, and so any, um, some of that discussion that was, um, made, uh, was really outlining, um, some changes that still needed to be made with the map, some outdated, like shuttle services and things that were, um, weren't currently used. Um, there was, um, some mitigation companies mentioned that are no longer, um, working as well. Um, so there's some very minor changes, uh, that took place. The main things that I kind of wanted to focus on here is, um, let's see here, so I'm going out to it, is really next steps. Um, since we've gone so in-depth on this, I don't, I'm not gonna go overboard with explaining, uh, but essentially what will happen is, um, if the, uh, planning commission votes to, um, approve this tonight, it will go to the Board of Trustees next Tuesday. Um, they will also approve it and sign a resolution as well. There will be two resolutions, one for the planning commission, one for the board. Um, in spring twenty twenty-five, uh, the Board of Trustees will initiate their, uh, strategic planning effort to align with the municipal code policies and priorities that were listed here in this comprehensive plan. Uh, we'll continue to have ongoing public engagement. Um, from my side, that'll look like people doing, um, land use applications, you know, looking at, um, we'll continue to use that for some of the criteria and being able to relate it back to the comprehensive plan, and it fits with this plan. Um, and then just in general, um, getting that out there and letting people know there's a new comprehensive plan for people who haven't been as involved. Um, and then future updates and monitoring. Um, so the town will implement a five-year review cycle to keep the plan current and responsive to evolving needs. Um, so really tonight, uh, we're looking for a motion to approve it or deny it. Um, the final comprehensive plan has been attached and Resolution twenty twenty-five zero one. Um, I don't know if you have specific questions, or if John, if you want to add anything to that.
Just really quickly, there's, all of you worked really hard on this plan. I just want to give you guys a lot of credit. This takes a lot of effort. And I don't think it would be as good as it is if you guys had really combed through it and made sure that we got, you know, every parcel correct and made sure that we had these distinctions in the three mile plan and all of these things that you did. So I just want to thank you all for your work. I want to thank you for working collaboratively with the board and the staff to make this a really good process, and I think you have a comp plan that is not only effective for tomorrow, but it's gonna be something that we can work with and evolve with over the next several years, and I think it's gonna give you a good basis for your work. So all of you, and that includes Britt and Jennifer and everybody online too, so I just wanted to say that about the process here, and it's been an honor to work with you guys on this.
Okay, thank you. Is there any questions from the planning commission to the staff about the comprehensive plan? Clarifying questions?
Actually, I have one. I'm still kind of fuzzy on how the, um, DDA subarea plan works along with the comp plan. I would have originally thought that it should all be part of the same plan. It's a separate document, which I believe, unless I was absent at a meeting, I believe we haven't seen it yet for review or provide comments back. I don't know whether that's going to happen yet. I mean, there are comments in the comp plan that talk about it, uh, but it's not technically part of the plan, so I'm just, maybe just a quick clarification of how that's gonna work.
My understanding is what we would do next is consider looking at an overlay district or potentially design guidelines for downtown based on the subarea plan, and that kind of guides downtown development for the DDA. They have what's called a plan of development that they use to, yeah, to guide infrastructure work in the downtown area. And so what I would like to do is bring that forward to you to review the subarea plans so you guys can see it. And then we can look at whether or not you want to do those things in the downtown area and put them into code or not. And that would be a separate process. I mean, even, I guess, generally, what was originally contemplated or?
Uh, so I don't know that we had thought about exactly, um, the process. It does need to be adopted. I was, I was just pulling up, um, the statute, but my recollection is it does need to be adopted, adopted in a similar way. Um, because essentially it's part of this comprehensive plan. Um, but I'm looking at that right now.
Yeah, it gets referred to in the comp plan. That's what was confusing to me is if we approve the comp plan with um, references to the D, the sub, uh, subarea plan, um, it, it seems kind of a weird way to go about this. Nothing, it takes away from the comp plan, but it's just kind of an interesting way to combine.
And I wonder, Trustee Sterling, was that something that the BOT and the DDA, uh, mainly worked on? Uh, the document is, the document that I saw says final.
Yeah, so it was brought to us to review as a part, just like the comprehensive plan was, you know, to give initial feedback and whatnot. Um, but like the comprehensive plan, it hasn't come before us for final adoption.
So is there a strategy for the ultimate integration of the two? I mean, I think if that's what we have, the best we have at this point is to what we have going forward with the ultimate idea that we're gonna integrate in some way for trustees if they're both being presented there.
Well, I think it depends on what, uh, Tommy Mattson says, uh, we're allowed to do, but as John said, if we can see that, you know, over the next couple of months and kind of work that as a, as a separate document, uh, then that would probably be the best way to, to go about it, but, um, move on to suggestions.
I think that what we can do is, you know, get the answer from down here, and then we need to go through whatever process we need to do to make a planning commission.
I, I agree with John. I don't know if you're, if you're all waiting for me, but I do agree with John, um, that it'll come back before the planning commission for approval, and then also the Board of Trustees.
Okay. So, Attorney Mattson, let me just ask you quickly. Um, so it is legal then to reference other documents from the comp plan even though they're technically not part of it?
Yes, no, yeah.
Even if they're not been adopted by the town? Yeah.
Right, but it will be. I mean, it's, it is coming forward. It will be.
Any question? Other players running questions?
It could be stated under development, but the, if it, it, just the semantics or the technicality would make you feel better to have it state something like the DDA uh, development plan currently underway or something, or I'm not sure that would be significant enough.
Well, I don't really have a problem with that. It was just, I'd like just legally, you know, how this is handled. And I think, John, your, you know, answer suffices, and it sounds like we'll see it fairly quickly anyway.
Right.
At least by the time the comp plan gets adopted, um, you know, hopefully the, the subarea plan goes through the same process quickly.
We can bring that in the next meeting, Brett, I think.
Yeah, yeah, we can definitely do that, and I think it's important too that the, the board and like staff won't start using that portion of it until, you know, they're gonna adopt their strategies after all this has been adopted. Um, and it wouldn't really make sense for me to reference it anywhere until, um, it's been fully adopted by you both. But yes, I can put it on my.
Same time.
Well, and there's some other players involved in that too, with the DDA having a significant say-so in that, so anything that we, any changes or anything that we'd like to see in that subarea plan, you know, we'll have to kind of go through the similar process like we did here. And, and then there'll be two boards that I need to get by on from both the DDA and the, and the BOT then.
Okay, I think the only danger is if there's something contradictory in the subarea plan with the comp plan, we have to be careful not to, you know, make sure they're consistent, not contradictory in some way. Kind of like parts of our code, you know, all that, right, which.
Alignment.
Yes, alignment, yes.
So with this plan, there's always a way to reevaluate and restructure certain things? Or is it set into, uh, the plan that we have to follow guidelines only in the plan? Will we be able to make different amends to it?
For the comprehensive plan?
Yes.
Yeah, that's, that's one of the things the document is well structured for. It should evolve a little bit over time. You may not be able to achieve all the goals that are in there, but it's designed in such a way that we can, we can update it over time, and if there's something that isn't possible, we can, there, that's a hundred percent true what you said. We, you don't have to be set still here.
Okay.
And it references ongoing, um, feedback and input from stakeholders, which I think is critical, because I, I feel like it's only ever going to be as ready as it can be in any one moment, but it is such an evolving process, so I think that, that actively seeking ongoing input from stakeholders is a critical component.
Well, and just listening to all the discussions we have had, the ongoing discussions and the last work session, the, it, it evolves continuously. It's, it, unlike you have stated many times, it's a roadmap. It's not restricting us. It's giving us guidance.
Well, and priorities, you know, we'll adjust that as need be, but, uh, yes, always, always evolving, uh, and, but not, you know, and that's what's helping the awarenesses of.
And that was my. And and that was my concern with with chapter ten, having list of specific action items, which I I still just go on record to say, I don't think that should be part of a strategic plan. But an ongoing uh, because that, that whole section I think will change over time. Priorities will change. There'll be things we hadn't thought of before that has to be added. Um, and that's why in the past we've always treated that as like a separate. And I think, John, you saw what we did with the previous comp plan by having a spreadsheet that will constantly updated and then we use that to pick out items to work on during meetings from that time. So, so I just want, I just again, um, and I've said this many times before, I just want to be sure that the town isn't obliged to do something uh, if something changes because it's listed in the comp plan. For example, under chapter ten.
Well, I'm listening to the work session. And just listening to everybody's comments and how they progressed. I think we have covered so many of the bases to show that we don't want to be restricted in a lot of ways, but yet we're moving through with a good plan.
I I think the wording is there to, to protect us, but you know, you never know how somebody reads something differently out of the text.
Exactly.
Well, and and as has been said multiple times, that this isn't a regulatory document. This is a, a visioning document for our community. Uh, and then it's when we actually start putting stuff into the code and doing resolutions that will actually have uh, the actual actionable uh, team to enforce something. Uh, so you know, there was concerns in the past about that or or concerned by trustee Corbland that if it's either in or not in the comp plan, that uh, somebody will say, well, it wasn't in the comp plan, you can't do this, or it's in the compliance, so you have to do it. And I I take issue with that. And then I think attorney Mattson has addressed that significantly, but uh, this is a visioning document uh, and not, not something that's regulatory. So, okay, good, good. Any, any other uh, clarifying questions before I open it up to public comment? Anything from you online, Tim?
Nope, I'm good.
I will uh, open this up for public comment. Uh, as a reminder, please state your first and last name and your relationship to Town Netherland typically by saying your address. Uh, comments must be limited to three minutes. There's nobody here in the room, but if there's anybody online that would like to take this time to comment, please uh, let yourself be known.
There is no one online as well. Uh, just our members and uh, Mattson and Sterling.
Close the public comment. Does the staff have any further comments uh, that you would like to add?
Um, I would just like to add, super appreciate you guys' help. We obviously started with Miranda, didn't have Miranda and then had John and you guys kind of helped me, you know, go through this transition as we still kept working on the comprehensive plan. So I really appreciate you guys being super thorough. Um, and putting in the time and suggesting the work sessions and making sure this document was like fully ready for the public. Um, SC group's not here, but I super appreciated them. Um, we did a lot of um, one of the subgroups of them was the, the individuals who did our um, multimodal transportation plan. Um, and they did an excellent job with community outreach, which was awesome. That was a really cool experience to see what actually worked. So we can start using those processes moving forward. Uh, but just wanted to say thank you for powering through this. This is my first comprehensive plan, so it was really cool to see kind of how it works. Um, how it could go better and like how it went good for me. Um, so again, just wanted to thank you all for that.
And I, and sure, the rest of the commissioners, thank you very much for the hard work that you put in on this. Uh, you know, this doesn't just happen. And every, every comment that we made has to be followed up. And and so I know that you're the details person behind this and and put in lots the most uh, sweat and and energy into this. So thank you so much for that. At this time, I will now close the public hearing and the planning commission will move on to discussion and deliber- deliberation of the application. At this time, is there any further deliberation on by by members uh, on this before we follow the vote?
I just want to make a statement about all the, the work that we've done. And after intense review, which I think we all can agree on, we definitely reviewed this um, plan. And listening to all aspects and opinions, I support moving forward with this plan. Um, public input has been very important. I'm a little disappointed. There's no public input tonight.
Guess that means they're happy.
I think they must be happy. I'm hoping they're not happy. Um, after reviewing with the, the board, the staff and the consulting uh, team, I feel we have given thorough thought and scrutiny and review. Um, as we've stated many times, it is a roadmap to follow. And I think it's a good one. So I think we need to proceed with that.
Yeah, I couldn't come up with the analogy when I was meeting with the BOT, uh, I kept saying it's a roadmap. And what I wanted to say is the BOT is going to decide where we stop for lunch on the trip. Okay, so all the, all the specifics are going to come down to the BOT on what's going to actually get implemented. Uh, other, other content or deliberation? Uh, let me go ahead and review something that was in the aim that I probably should have brought up sooner. Just for the record, uh, this has been, you know, an over, uh, more than a year long process. Uh, it started off with a visioning open house in January of twenty twenty four, uh, with the, which was a public event where residents came. I think I was part of that and and gave it in for feedback. Uh, there was an online community survey that was available uh, all the way from January through uh, spring of twenty twenty four to allow input from the residents. There were focus groups and stakeholder meetings uh, with different folks, uh, different groups and giving updates. Uh, I'd been to at least three of them myself. They did a community meeting where they actually presented the initial comprehensive plan draft uh, right here in uh, September. I was at that one and I'm going to tell you from seeing that first one, we have made a lot of changes to this plan to make it reflect Netherland and the goals that we want as a community. And then we've had public work sessions uh, from the summer uh, through the fall and all the way until last Wednesday, uh, where we had our final one so that we could um, take information from any boards that wanted to be a part of it. It wasn't just the BOT. We also had uh, members from the DDA there giving input as well as the director of the DDA. And so it was, uh, I, I think it's, I'm very proud of the document. If you get a chance to really read it in depth, it goes over a lot of information. Uh, it, I think the SE group did a good job on putting this together and listening to our feedback. And I really appreciate the staff for pulling it all together in this very coherent document that I think is going to serve as well as a document.
And I did want to note, there were like mailings and also like um, surveys printed for the senior lunches. So we also um, made an effort outside of this to go to the public that doesn't get on the computer or isn't able to physically get to the meetings. And so we tried to do that. We did outreach as well on that. So just wanted to note that there was, yeah, a lot of outreach done on this one.
I know.
Just did. I'd like to commend everyone's work done without beating it out of you. Um, I think the SE group did a fantastic job of trying to pull all this information together. It's, to me, it's a, a very professional looking document. Did a great job of putting it together both visually as well as content. And I, I'm very very happy with, and that whole document has changed so much since when I first saw that in December, it was early December uh, through today. They've really pulled this thing together. It's uh, we should be very proud of this document.
What everybody else decided. Also, there was really impressive town staff and the SE group their abilities to uh, take the constructive criticism, feedback, really migrate it quickly and redevelop it from that. Okay. I would entertain a motion. And I have some language for somebody that might. Commissioner Dye, I would approve resolution twenty twenty five dash TC dash zero one, a resolution of the planning commission of the town of Netherland approving the twenty twenty five comprehensive plan.
I'll second that. Oops, second that.
I'm going to go ahead and start the vote. Commissioner dug in?
Yep, approved.
Awesome. Uh, Commissioner Penner? Commissioner Glasser?
Yes.
Chair Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner William or Vice Chair Williams, sorry.
Uh, yes.
And uh, Commissioner Dye? Sorry.
Yes.
Okay. I don't know. I mean, we have our six. Do you? I'll just say it for fun. If not, favorite bro Tim, uh, Sterling?
Sure, for giggles, let's go ahead and say yes.
Okay, motion passes. That's excellent. This has been a document that uh, has been, you know, evolving. And I really appreciate the willingness of the staff and the previous commissioners. I wasn't here during the last time they did a comprehensive plan. I think part of the issues with changing is and growth was that, you know, the different, the comprehensive plan last time looked different than this one, but it's, it's an evolving process. And so we came to a document that I think that uh, is going to serve our town well and that, you know, we've had a lot of people's input. And uh, I'm very hopeful that we've uh, implemented enough of the feedback from the BOT that they are also going to see, see this as a good document. And uh, we'll be able to get that approved next Tuesday. And so thank you very much again for this. And uh, with that, yeah, I'm worried about uh, actual comp plan again for ten years, just some updates.
Let us know when the party is. Well, that's, that's just that one. That's when the party is, yes.
I, I, I feel like with the work session we had last week, and I appreciate uh, everyone who could participate. And we went really, I mean, out of thirty two changes they wanted, I think we adopted twenty nine. Uh, so I, I, I mean, we really tried uh, to, to work with, you know, the, the feedback we got from them. And so hopefully there will be soon say we know that. Okay, uh, Timmy, if you have to drop off, I think we're going to go on to the town report for now. So thank you so much for uh, jumping in to help us with this.
He jumped off. I told him. I told him too. Awesome.
If we can go ahead with the town report?
Yeah, absolutely. Okay. Um, so a couple of cool things um, kind of going on in um, the utilities world. Um, there are some meter improvements. Um, the technology just hasn't been great yet, as some of you are finding out. I've seen Commissioner die a few times. Um, and so uh, they're going to be trying out Badger meters. Um, we're kind of seeing there's just meters are going down here and there, and that's just kind of how the industry goes. Um, so staff is going to be expecting to start um, getting this equipment in and installing it as of April. Um, let's see, and.
Selling there too, so we can actually.
Yeah. Yeah.
So we can do a little bit more proactive content.
Yes. Um, and right now, um, they're still on track to repair or replace a hundred meters in twenty twenty five.
Tell you that that works because we have I want to thank that you guys for that because somebody uh, turned on the hose below the church and let the water run and it was running uh, for hours and hours. And somebody from the town was who actually alerted us. Uh, and we were able to get that, you know, before it ended up being days. I mean, there's nobody there during the week, so it couldn't get, uh, so it's already paying dividends. Thank you.
Yeah, and if that ends up adding quickly, just reach out to us. There's paperwork we can definitely do there. Um.
So is that like the smart meter that actually can turn off water if uh, that's a problem?
That technology doesn't exist yet with the power requirements for it. And uh, because the solar meg valve, like these batteries work really well for later. So either transmitter, the, there's a megometer in there. Um, but that would be, that's something I think that is on the horizon in that technology in maybe the next six years or so.
Yeah, no, it's there now. I mean, we're thinking about putting in the smart meter uh, or smart valve, sorry, uh, meter. To, you know, if you're on travel or you're away from home and get burst pipe, then um, then it realizes that, hey, you're using too much water, it just shuts it off. I think that's.
Would that shut it off at the meter or at the, the shut off valve?
At your, at your shut off valve.
Cause there's a lot in town that they can't locate.
Yeah, we've been working on that. There's a lot of pipe in Netherland for sure. So that's something that we're going to continue to do. This uh, this hundred meter a year target, that's a pretty reasonable amount of work for the staff we have because some of that involves like just a lot of projects. And often if you were involved in the, if you had your service lines tested for lead during the progress or the project in the slugs ball. But that was one of the main issues is, is just locating those lines and everything. So we're going to continue doing that. We're building a new GIS system that tracks all of that inventory. And that's something that I think will help over the long term to speed everything up better in the ground.
Yeah. Um, another exciting thing is the final loan payment for the excavator. Their staff is just waiting to receive it and then it will be paid off. Um, so that's super exciting. Um, another thing I kind of wanted to just um, pick from here is um, staff visited a water fill station in Idaho Springs um, and had a meeting with Boulder County, Boulder County and Netherland Fire District um, held in February to finalize uh, the scoping and sitting of being able to do this here in town. Um, so their staff is working on getting quotes from vendors um, to see what it'll look like supply and cost wise and get this going, which would be awesome. Um, let's see, something I wanted to note from mine, my staff reports are going to start looking different. Um, I have formatted them to start reporting so you guys can see how many like building permits and what type of building permits. Um, cause you'll be able to see like generators increase and things like that. I think it's just something cool that would be good for both boards to see. Um, and also going to just start adding like code enforcement because um, I think uh, one, just so the public can see, like, we do, we do get calls. We're not going to be listing what they are, but just saying their cases like, and this is how many open cases, and this is how many have closed this month. Um, because we do get calls in a lot and I want everyone to know they are taken care of. Uh, they're taken care of by me and uh, Jay Cook, our code enforcement staff um, with Safe Built. And so I'm just going to start updating like little stuff like that, kind of like you see in Macy's report. Um, another thing is, is Cass, I, Andrew Bliss, um, and a few of the staff members um, have been working on a concept paper for a microgrid. Um, this would really be to have some backup. Um, how we're looking at it is the wastewater plant or pump stations. Um, and so the concept paper will be submitted tomorrow. We've had tons of meeting, have met with Excel. Um, and this essentially is just if they like our concept paper, we're then invited to apply for the grant. Um, so Cass has put in a lot of time for this. It's um, some incredible work. Um, and we did go to the board of trustees and make sure they were also comfortable with us moving forward. So a lot of work has gone on between Cass and Andrew Bliss. Um, with kind of just my help on the inside. Um, and yeah, so we're submitting that tomorrow morning. Very excited. Would be really cool if we're able to apply for this. It's like a five percent match. And that five percent match can also come from DOLA. Um, yeah, and then a ninety five percent match. There's, so there's the federal funding that is currently on hold, but they still asked us to go ahead and submit the paper. And so the cool thing is, even if something were to happen and this grant wasn't gone through, all of this work has been done. And so we can find other sources. So this can actually happen. Um, so really cool project to see. It winds up with a comprehensive plan. It's something the board of trustees has been talking about. Nicole Sterling's very passionate about microgrids. Um, so I'm certainly excited about it as well. Um, but yeah, we're uh, very excited about that. Let's see, can you think of some other stuff off the top of your head as? but yeah, we're uh, very excited about that. Let's see, can you think of some other stuff off the top of your head as I'm going through?
And we're just trying to, we're trying to execute a lot of the budget work that we did last year. The next thing for the board after, oh, there are people will come through a resolution. That's what will be before them on Tuesday for the comprehensive plan. And then we're going to start working on it, the strategic plan like Brett said, that's the next big job for them. And that can have, there's a lot of pieces that'll probably go into that. But we're, we're working on that. There's a couple of other things happening um, around town. You may have heard that the cross mine is submitting for a new application under their DMO, which is basically their designated mining operation certification permit. That application is largely complete and the notification process has begun for the community and that's in the mountains here. So we'll see that over the next few weeks. The community is allowed to provide comments on that if there are concerns that people have. And so the board will be talking about that on Tuesday and just kind of discussing what that looks like, what the criteria are for the decision. Um, and and that kind of thing. It's a, it's a much expanded footprint for the mine that exists now. So I think that's one of the things that uh, is to be discussed a little bit. So I just wanna kind of put that on your radar. So if you're interested in participating in that conversation, we'd love to have you. That's really kind of the big thing. We recently had a rate study to it for water and wastewater and the board has been considering the rates that are included in that. That includes spiffies and half fees and all that kind of thing. So that's some work that we're gonna be continuing in the future. I think right now we're kind of in in kind of transition to execute mode now that this comprehensive plan you guys have adopted it. We want to start putting together that spreadsheet like you talked about, make sure you guys have all the action plans and just have good strategies for everybody to start working through things. So for our town staff report or anything else, one of the things that Brett and I have been talking about is if there's things that we can bring you or give you, if there's information you need or touch points, let us know. We're happy to meet with you offline too and kind of like figure stuff out if you'd like to have one-on-ones or anything like that. So I think things are probably gonna start moving a little bit quickly. So I just wanna make sure you guys are, you know, right at the forefront of the charge here, so.
And I have a couple more updates. Um, the EV charger. So they, uh, we have a third, uh, like an extended warranty through a company called the E-Fact. Um, there, it's, it's been not fun. Um, so I came up here, they sent one of their contractors, it's power is running to it, but it's still not connected online. Uh, so they sent someone from their team. He and I were here on President's Day during that wild snowstorm. And uh, he wasn't able to finish the work. I convinced him to say for a second day, he finished the work. Unfortunately, the EV car, someone rented it out and so thankfully Lindsay Danforth let me use her car and we popped a fuse. So, yeah, so uh, we are working with them to figure out another day that they can come and we're gonna make sure we have an EV car so that if something happens on spot, we can get it tested. Um, but he, he spent quite a bit of time. Um, it's been a pretty brutal project, but it's not one I'm willing to give up on, so we're gonna get there. And then um, uh, we, Cass and I have bi-weekly, bi-weekly meetings with um, Partners in Energy, Excel, and they're willing to do a ribbon cutting for us when it is finally complete, which we are very interested in, uh, so we can make sure it's out there. Um, but that's still continuing and so I'll keep you guys updated. Next Wednesday, I'm going in person for a broadband um, meeting with Gilpin County. Uh, that's still kind of going. We're a little bit held up right now. One, cause weather and two, C dot permitting is pretty, pretty brutal from what I'm hearing. Um, so we're still working with uh, the team to try to get that moving along. I'm hoping to have some more in-depth updates since we're all gonna be in person and kind of exploring next steps and visionary and what this is gonna look like and what else we can apply for. Um, there's been additional applications for bead funding. Um, it's uh, thankfully we have um, somebody who's been working directly with us and that's kind of through Gilpin. But he's been taking our information and being able to use that so we can get more coverage in this area on top of what we've already gone for. So again, we're kind of working direct, directly with Gilpin County, Clear Creek, um, several other communities. Um, another thing is um, the housing coordinator. So we've, are almost at the finalizing of a job description. Unfortunately, what happened is the match was above what both towns initially understood and so Boulder County is going to have some funding in the next month that they're essentially saying we would prioritize giving you this extra match. Um, I'm trying to get something in writing, so I know that's for sure because I don't, we don't have the budget this year. Um, and so that's still continuing forward. Uh, we have talked to DOLA. Um, they're kind of directing us to just go for it until funds run out. Again, this is like a limited shared housing coordinator position between Lions and us. Um, so more updates to come on that. You have a question?
Yeah, actually, tell me, what would the duties, what would the housing coordinator be focused on?
Yeah, so I've done a lot of you guys' foundational work for this, but essentially they would be helping me out. I'm on several housing meetings a week with a lot of different counties and we're kind of talking about like best practices, what we can do to actually have affordable housing, what it looks like if it's for self or rent. Um, so it would kind of be, it would be their duty. One, they would have a lot more background than I do in housing. Uh, they would help us figure out, be able to have these conversations I'm having with developers. Um, which again, like I've, I've done a lot of this foundational work, so it's really just to create affordable housing and fill our Prop one, two, three goals. Um, and keep building those relationships with developers and private landowners. Um, how I've kind of approached this right now is I'm talking to different private landowners um, and seeing if there's an interest there. I am bringing forward at our next meeting some housing possible language updates and code, um, just discussion where I'm having um, a hard time being able to get density for some of this affordable housing based on some of the definitions we adopted during the housing study. Um, and another point that Mike's kind of brought up through this whole comprehensive plan is we really have to define affordable housing for our town. Um, so I think that's a discussion now that the comprehensive plan is gonna be adopted that I would like to start moving forward so we can figure out how this is done and other communities, there's like, um, which we'll get in more to that meeting. There are houses that are already built. Um, you can create a criteria and those houses can become affordable deed restricted units. Um, there has to be like a standard that they're held to. It can't be like an old dilapidated mining cabin. Uh, but these are things that um, they would kind of help me with. It's like, how can we better equip our code? Or the people who are willing, even if it's just one piece, one house on each parcel to get us to that goal, they would really just be helping me with that or taking that on so I could take on more projects. Um, and they would be doing the same thing for Lions. So it'd be a split position.
Could they help the parts such as planning commission or or trustees with housing? Uh, you know, action items or how we perceive?
Correct. And how the job description is written, they like have to have like the background, the schooling, like they really, it, where I don't have that specifically. I've just gotten creative. Um, they would have that and they would be up, so they would be able to come from you with like already having some of this experience. Um, and be able to guide us on like what is working or what is not working, you know, things like that. Um, so we're still, still working on that. Again, we'll have more updates. I kind of give you my housing updates there. Um, we, again, I'm, I'm having these conversations with private landowners. There are landowners who are maybe interested to do in one or two units. Um, there is really like a restriction, which we'll get more into. Um, but the conversations are still happening. It's just we don't have a lot of land to do it here. Um, so that's my updates. It would, um, if you wanna answer.
Do you? Yeah, Chair Reese, do you have your microphone on? Because I can't, we can't hear you when you talk.
Chair, 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 can you hear me now?
Okay, yeah, a little bit better.
So the question was, what happens if we can't meet our Prop one, two, three requirement? And the answer, eh, eh, that was not a good thing. And then for a year, we can't apply for funding and then we can again. So it's not the worst thing in the world, but I think it would be nice if we didn't have to do that. Um, the funding sources that has been available to have not been super helpful to Netherland at this point, but I think if we can get to the point where a project could happen, it would, it would be reasonable. And I think there's a pretty good chance we can get it done this year, so.
Yeah, and the reminder being that these units have to be permitted, they don't have to be built by twenty, by our deadline. And so that's, that's also, you know, something I had to make sure I wrapped my head around.
Thank you.
Um, let's see, other than that, there is a staff position open that closes March third. As always, there's a BZA opening if anyone is interested or knows anyone. Um, I do foresee us meeting here in the future, but it's been a while since that board is met. I'm also over that board. Um, if you have someone that's interested, that's a good way to get started without like a huge commitment to, yeah. Um, so just wanted to kind of outline that. Um, you know, streets and parks got hit with the snow there. They've been doing a great job. They're kind of starting to work on spring, summer plans. Um, so more to keep coming from them. Um, and let's see, the elevator, wasn't there some contract with the elevator?
Yeah, the, this building, that elevator is just getting a little bit long in the tooth and it's a piston-driven elevator and so the parks for that have also increased exponentially. So what we've done is we've gotten a, we used to just do a service call on a one-off basis and we decided to switch that into a regular maintenance program so that we can keep that elevator running. It's very critical to have that accessibility in this building. So that's something we just did recently. It actually didn't end up costing the town any more money or less money. It just gives us a better finance structure.
Great, that's, that's awesome. If possible, and I know that this is off the cuff, but could you maybe go over what you think we as a planning commission might be working on over the next three months? Just, just, we know the sub area plan is gonna come to us.
Yeah, so next month we are gonna have a lot line adjustment um, for an individual who owns both of the properties, wants to make adjustment to make them. So that's to come. Um, we have a couple, we have another, um, it's not updated on the staff report, it was on my next one to kind of come. We have some um, incomplete ones, so I'm not gonna like put them out there yet. Um, but probably some more land use applications um, to come before the PC. Um, I would really like to start working on that affordable piece and that language so that I can continue to have those conversations until. I think we had spoken about, um, and this is something, some, if anyone wants to bring up something they wanna see as well. Um, chapter sixteen in general, I think, has some updates that needs to be done, so we're gonna have to start looking at those. Um, probably in sections or as a whole, however, had that has to, you know, however that needs to look. Um, let's see, do you have any, John?
And that's the uh, warning order that there's going to be, somebody is gonna need to be on that subcommittee, so.
Yes.
Start thinking.
I'm gonna need some of you. Um, but yeah, probably digging more through what changes need to, I mean, that in itself is gonna be pretty substantial. Um, honestly, like my approach is, one, any feedback and two, I'll be having a, a meeting with John and uh, Chair, Chair Vice Chair to kind of go over things that they also would like to see on the meeting. So this is really our structural point of things we'd like to tackle this year. Animal code will be going back before the Board of Trustees, so you guys will see that if anyone wants to be involved, cause it's still on my list. Um, other than that, I think it's, you know, it's a lot of this, this housing stuff is what I'd like to tackle first. Um, and then discrepancies for, for any, yeah, any chapters that we're seeing over and over. Um, I know the PUD, that's something that we kind of got direction from you guys on, so staff will need to bring that kind of back. Cause that language was a little confusing. It wasn't much more that was required, so you'll probably see that again. Uh, remember Miranda and I started that, so we'll probably bring a refresher before we just throw it at you. Um, and then just keep working from there. I'm sure there's more that's gonna pop up. And I'd like to start kind of at the end of each meeting being like, next month, this is what we're looking at, but I think we're gonna start seeing some more land use here now that the in the next couple of months, weather will start getting better and this is when we usually see permits start to pick up. Usually by like the, I mean, we're already still having frequent permits right now. Everyone's doing their inside work. But that outside, the decks and the siding and the roof will keep, you know, start pumping up here and um, some building. There are some houses and structures that will be going up as well. And teens, teens will be happening this year. Yes.
Any status on the preschool?
Um, they, we're in initial review for some plans, building permit, an application has been submitted. Um, that's kind of where we're at with that. I'm not sure if there's any updates beyond my planning permitting side with you.
They're still working through their process. They're doing, I think they're uh, more than a conceptual level of design right now. And I think their intention is to try to, they have a timeline that's largely dependent on how long it takes to certify the daycare or not the, the childcare. And that is a process with the state that isn't very flexible. So they're trying to hit a window so that they can meet the opening that they want. And I do not have enough information for you exactly how that works, but that's basically what they're trying to do. So I think they're trying to get a spring start time so they can start setting work and things like that.
Yeah, I, I think I recall them saying that uh, one of the meetings I was here, that they were looking at having it ready to go by June so that they could then get certified to be able to actually open by August of 2026 was what they were hoping for before the school.
I agree. Um, I think uh, they, I think they're optimistic they'll hit that goal.
Yeah, yeah, it's looking like planning wise and timeline that they um, they will probably hit that goal for sure.
One other note from interning beds and we need to complete the natural medicine regulations. That's another project that we have on our list.
Yeah.
We put that moratorium in place with the intention of looking at what the state is. So that's something that we should be um, thinking about in the near future.
And that was for a year, so was it, was it a calendar year? So by the end of this year, we have to have that in place?
I think so. And I think we could maybe have a, like Brett said, have a refresher on that and talk about it and see where we're at with the state regulations and uh, potentially bring forward or events for you.
Do you have something, Commissioner Penner?
It was back on the childcare. We moved on, so it's okay. I was just gonna point out that um, Wild Bear Nature Center is also offering discounted childcare, which I know was referenced in the comp plan, but they mentioned it at the Backcountry Film Festival last week. And I'm not sure of the timeline for that, if that's already available, but I think just while we keep the town childcare needs, that that should stay on our radar as well.
Excellent point, yes.
Is there anything moving forward with the paid parking?
Yes, we're gonna meet with their staff here in the very immediate future, just trying to get the meeting scheduled. Uh, finalize contracts and then the trial program is anticipated to start this summer. You wanna run it in uh, one of the peak seasons, whichever one, how it'll work. It'll be a three-month trial. And so that is anticipated to start. I think we probably started in May or June. Um, we wanna get that done pretty quick so that there can be the community engagement piece, cause the goal would be to have everybody taken care of in the Netherlands space and then the, you know, everything set up for, for when people are visiting.
Any updates on Eldora, should we ask?
I think it would be a really cool project for the town. I guess I can say that. I uh, I don't have anything I can share with you. The board did create an enterprise fund, which is a um, structured like our water and wastewater funds. That's a non-taxpayer dollar fund basically. So basically it's money that's generated from fees from service. So right now that fund is sitting empty. It just exists. If something happens and we would use that structure so that it separates the town and the mountain. But that's pretty much the last update that uh, is, it has happened for that project.
Well, certainly uh, interesting how things have changed in the last six months. Uh, where that might end up being something that is very beneficial for our town in the upcoming funding environment. Uh, if you can count on uh, federal dollars, you know, that maybe that'll be something that helps sustain us if that's able to be completed.
Netherlands always taking care of itself and I think building structure for that to continue to happen is a good thing.
Would federal funding um, hamper this effort with Eldora?
Um, I don't think so. There could be. Yeah, federal funding would hamper things with Eldora and I don't think so, but I don't think there's correct funding source that we would utilize for for anything that could happen. Like there's other things that could happen. There's funding sources for for things, but I think they might not come from the federal level.
Well, since a large portion of the land is um, for a service, would that affect anything in that regard?
Oh, I understand what you're asking. No, cause we're, there, that wouldn't be, that's like a lease for that land, so.
Now that there's a greater federal funding, have you seen any of that's from? Now that we've been considering federal funding, have you seen any of that's from those services that's happening in DC?
Yes, we have. Uh, specifically on the Big Springs Egress Planning Projects, the reimbursements haven't all come in for the work that has been done. I think that because the project is appropriated and it's like, hmm, pretty advanced, I don't really foresee that being a long-term project. But I think it's more related to just the transition and everything that's happened. So we did also, when the, when the switch happened, there was an audit of that program. And we found ourselves to be largely, you know, we're doing what we need to, there's a couple of things that just get updated as things update. But um, but that's pretty much the only real impact that we've had. I don't know if you all were able to come, when Joe DeGuss was here the other day last week. But he talked about some of the impacts that our community has had, especially in the forest service and the folks working in the different labs that are close by to here, and there has been some of those impacts on our community, for sure. I think, I'm sorry, I have one more thing to add to that, fire mitigation is probably something that we're thinking about. Just with what's happened in the national forests and their teams, and so we're working with ODM, which is the Office of Disaster Management in Boulder County. Because they have more resources than us and what we're probably going to do is start a, a fire mitigation team from the town that's built up department heads. We're trying to find some better ways for volunteers to integrate. There's some liability challenges with, you know, people using chainsaws on town property and fire bans and all that kind of stuff. But we're working through that, the goal would be to create a level of service agreement with the town about where and how fire mitigation happens in a safe way and then that in a reasonable way and all that kind of thing. So that's one of the things we're doing to try to work through that challenge.
Great, thanks, it'd be great to be kind of consistently updated on facts as they trickle down. And maybe it adds to the community, I know there's a newsletter coming out in the near future. It might be great to, just so there's more visibility about what happens in DC and how it actually impacts us, because that's all, all of this. Good, good point, and, and I will tell you that uh, you know, people were very concerned about meeting. And I, I really appreciated uh, Congressman DeGuss's optimistic attitude and, and basically saying, hey, don't, don't give in to despair and, and give up, you know, the fight before it even happens. Uh, you know, we're, we're gonna go forward, we're gonna fight every battle, uh, the courts, uh, we're still working through stuff. But there, there was some pessimism uh, expressed. And uh, I, I was really appreciative, I told him so uh, afterwards, you know, of the, hey, you know, the, the way you lose the fight is by, by giving up in advance. And so I, I really appreciated that optimistic message and uh, I think that, you know, people are gonna fight for what's right going forward, so. Okay, I think we probably.
Oh, I was gonna say, I have one more update I forgot to mention to you guys. So we did get direction from the board to move forward with the twenty twenty-four building code. Um, and so um, a subcommittee will be created from that and we will start. That is like a whole process in itself, you have to have some hearings, a lot of public outreach, and so that's been started. So we'll move towards twenty twenty-four, which now means I'll go from studying twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-four so I can get my certification. Um, but yeah, we're very excited about that. Um, just a quick little breakdown, I won't go super into it, is twenty twenty-one, they actually saw like a big increase. And then when the twenty twenty-four came, it actually went down in cost. Um, so even though we're making a jump and there's still costs associated, there's less costs associated with going to twenty twenty-four. So I will send you guys the presentation from that and some just materials if you are interested in looking into it. Um, we're gonna be working directly with Safe Built, Netherlands, uh, Fire Protection District. Um, our sustainability quarter, co- coordinator, myself, um, Attorney Mattson. Um, and there's a couple other people in there and uh, we've already started, I started outreach by reaching out to some of our local builders before that was kind of made, so I presented to the board. Um, a lot of them are very on board, there are some concerns they have with like fire components. But there's a lot of stuff that's gonna be coming from the state that's gonna be mandated anyways, outside of that, so just a lot of changes coming. Uh, but just wanted to let you guys know we're heading that direction. So, lots more to come.
Okay, great, thank you very much, I, I think that we've uh, you're involved in a lot of stuff and I, I would appreciate that, anything that you think that would be of interest to us that comes across your desk. Uh, you know, send it for our reference, you know, if we have a chance to look at it, we will, and it's always gonna have information on what other communities are doing too, so thank you. At that, I will entertain a motion.
I make a motion to adjourn this meeting.
Second. All, just.
Yep, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, uh, meeting adjourns at eight seventeen, thank you guys online for all your help.